Okay, um, thank you for that. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the, uh, consent agenda? Second by Robert, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Here's my pink little bucket, but there's nothing in here. And the second candidate for the District One, Edward Dilgrin. Uh, District Rep Morrison, Drift. First on the candid, or the ballot list is Perry L. Drift, and second will be Edward Dilgrin. And for chairperson, we got Catherine Shavers. And first on the list will be Catherine Shavers, and second will be Hannah LaHia Chosa. Thank you.
Kelly get it cleared up, so please, uh, bear with us. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me okay online now?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you, but can, can you hear us?
Okay, it's nine thirty-two and we're getting, uh, back to, uh, business here. I believe the glitches have been fixed, so, um, moving on, we have, and excuse me for this, if I say it wrong, we have Kiza Bee- Beesman.
Yes, Kiza Beesman, can you hear me?
We see you Kiza, but we can't hear you. And I hope I say, I'm saying your name right. I apologize if I'm not.
I unmuted the camera. Or I mean, I unmuted the... Ooh, can you hear me?
Can you, can you talk now, Beez, Kiza?
Can you hear me? Hello?
We can't hear you yet.
Just a second. Can you hear me at all? I'm talking, but nothing's happening.
We see you, but we don't hear you.
Okay. I can, hmm, I don't know what to do here.
Hold on.
Can you guys hear me okay online now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you, but can, can you hear us?
Okay. It's nine thirty-two and we're getting, uh, back to, uh, business here. I believe the glitches have been fixed, so, um, moving on, we have, and excuse me for this, if I say it wrong, we have Kiza Be- Beesman.
Yes, Kisha Beesman, can you hear me?
We see you, Kiza, but we can't hear you. And I hope I say, I'm saying your name right. I apologize if I'm not.
I unmuted the camera. Or I mean, I unmuted the... Ooh, can you hear me?
Can you, can you talk now, Bees, Kiza?
Can you hear me? Hello?
We can't hear you yet.
Just a second. Can you hear me at all? I'm talking, but nothing's happening.
We see you, but we don't hear you.
Okay. I can't... I don't know what to do here.
Hold on.
Can you hear me now?
Kiza, can you hear me when I talk?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm a guest, so we can hear each other, but it's audio on RTC's app.
We still can't hear you.
Something on their end, I think.
Okay.
Can anybody speak on the, on the Zoom or Teams? Certainly not. Thought we had it fixed. Huh? Anybody? Kiza?
Kiza?
Can you hear me?
No.
No.
We're pushing all kinds of buttons over here. Hang on. Okay, thanks, Kim. Well... Well, we can, um, just, we can explain what's going on here with the resolution. There's a resolution number seventy-six twenty-twenty-four, a Tier Three Recommendation and Support. And are we saying your name correctly, Kiza? Just shake your head, yes or no? No?
No.
Kaisha?
It's okay. Keisha.
Okay. Keisha?
Yeah.
Keisha?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Keisha, thank you. Okay, they can hear us, but no picture. Okay. So, anyway, um, Keisha was at the last meeting and, uh, needed to provide some documentation regarding, um, seeking a licensure to teach American Indian history, language, or culture, um, and, uh, attesting to her, uh, competence in American Indian language or, um, the knowledge and understanding of American Indian history and culture. Um, and so, uh, what happened was at the last meeting, um, her, the resolution was, uh, tabled, and since then, we have received a letter from Fond du Lac College, um, that she graduated with academic high honors, and, um, also that, uh, she works at Masabi East, and, uh, she is part of the APAC, American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Um, and she'd like, uh, the, in, the parent committee would like to recommend her for a Tier Three licensure in order to teach Inishnaabig in our school. So, um, she's been working with American Indian students since nine fifteen twenty-seventeen, and, um, she's been proven, according to the, the committee there, to be the best advocate for American Indian children. So, we do have resolution number seventy-six dash twenty-four, which would need approval to give her that, uh, Tier Three Recommendation and Support that she needs to get her licensure. Any questions? Because I don't think she'll be able to answer them. Yet.
Can you hear me?
If there's no questions, do we have a motion to approve the resolution for Keisha, Keisha, Kaisha, whatever? Seventy-six twenty-twenty-four. Do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll move to approve.
Move by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Travis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent motion carried. Thank you so much for following up on that, and sorry we couldn't hear you today, but good luck and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Chris Holm with the project, dam project update. Good morning, Chris.
There we go. So, I'll update you on the, uh, current status of the dam and how we got there, and what's going on now. The new, the stop block dam, um, was installed and completed, um, early spring twenty-twenty-three. Construction went through the winter. It was installed and functional in spring. We went through a rice season, as you know, um, good rice season. And at this point, we're, uh, doing some fine tuning to the stop block dam, put some gasketting in, trying to stop a few leaks. Stop blocks are inherently leaky. Stop block dams are. Engineers will say that. Google will say that. It's a trade-off that, uh, you have to make, as in, or to not have a big concrete wall blocking all the flow. Okay? Any leaking that's going on right now is minor. But with some gasketting and some, um, adjustments, that will largely be taken care of. We need to go back now and return to the original project that we were working on, um, prior to the, all the dam fails. And that is restoring those rivers, that river, back to its meandering state. We were working on that, toward that, um, during the time that all the problems happened with the dam. And, um, the, the issue there is when you channelize a river, you force all, you force a lot of flow and a lot of volume straight through into that dam area. When that happens, you get a lot of scour and erosion around the edges. So, when we, when we put the, the whole idea of, uh, when we put the, when we had to put the emergency berm in, it was for that reason too, because scour and erosion had happened around the old dam and underneath it. So, at, at its high point in the flooding period, you could stand on that old, that old dam, and the whole thing was shaking. Okay, that's not good. So, um, that meant it was undermined. We knew that water was going around it. It was because of all that flooding that happened in twenty-one and twenty-two. The new, the, the stop block dam is not going to have the problems that the old dam does, because there's no co- solid concrete wall blocking the flow, and we can get more flow out of there quicker. We are still going to have erosion problems with the channelized river upstream, and it's already happened. And what we are going to have to do is go back in and either baffle upstream or put meanders in, in, back upstream to cause, to, basically, it causes more frictional force on the water that's coming down, slows it down, and lets us get rid of it. Otherwise, it builds up, it goes into those unconsolidated soils on the stream banks and eats it away. So, um, that's, that's, you know, that's an inherent problem. That came about thirty-seven years ago when it was decided to channelize the river, okay? Basically, we're getting a little, uh, little spank from Mother Nature right now, saying, you know, although it was considered to be the right thing to do, you know, caused more problems. Okay, those have got to be fixed. So, that's, we're going back to that, that phase of the restoration now. Restoration's hard, especially with water. You fix one thing over here, water's going to find something else to do over here. So, um, you know, it was good the way it was. It was, it was changed with, you know, best interests in mind, but system doesn't like that. And so, that's where we're going next, is back to trying to reestablish the stream channels and the, uh, the, the meandering, the way it was. And that will slow the flow, that will slow the volume hitting that dam area, and it will slow the erosion effects that's happening around the edges of the, the stream banks that, where the dam is now.
Okay, couple of questions right at the back. Now, with these minor works that you guys need to do, who's doing actual work itself?
Minor works? You mean, uh, adjusting the stop blocks?
Yep.
So, that's our, that's our water quality crew. They've got to get used to this new system of doing things. You know, this new, this new dam requires a new sort of, you know, understanding on how to operate. Okay? So, they have, this new dam actually has a foot more height of water that could be held back than the original dam did. So, they have to get used to understanding, you know, new water levels, new, and, and how to adjust that, that dam to accommodate.
Okay, and then, um, my other, next question is that how long, the, the, the company that came in and put in the dam, the new dam, how long are they liable, responsible for that dam itself?
Their, their, their warranty, the, the construction warranty, um, is, is expired now, okay? It's, it's met the, the, the term, okay? So, they agreed to stay on site, and I want to make this point clear too. When we discovered that we had erosion going on at that, at that dam, and it wasn't because of any construction, it was because of high flow, we had to take the berm out. Um, the berm, as you recall, was put in as an emergency measure back in twenty-one, actually twice it was put in. There was no way to, um, take the berm out in sections and, you know, allow water to slowly go in. Once we started to take the berm out, it all went, okay? So, we got hit with a huge slug of water, and that continued. And then, we discovered, you know, the same thing that was happening to the old dam was happening to this, the shorelines around the edges, the head walls, the, or wing walls, as they're called, those are the things that tie the dam into the shorelines to hold everything in place, right? We extended those on the new dam, much further than the old dam, but it was still working its way around, because it was such high water. So, the, the construction company at that time said, you know, "We will stay here and we will do adjustments to those head walls," because, you know, we have another, this was spring, they were ready to go to their next job, they were loading up. They said, um, "Once we go, we can't come back," you know, "at least immediately," right? So, "We will, we will keep people here, we will keep equipment here. If you get engineering to adjust those head walls so we don't, you know, have a lot of overflow, and we will fix it." So, but it was a question of, do we let them go, let the problem get bigger, go through all the process of, uh, acquiring either them or another contractor, go through all that RFP stuff, and then come back to you and say, "We got a really big problem. Now, we got to go back in and do it," or do we fix it now and get it done? And that's what we did.
Because I remember that one, the council, the, the previous council, um, we went to, um, I can't remember exactly where we went. It was over west somewhere, past like Bemidji, that area.
Right.
Detroit Lakes, there you go. And, um, we were looking at those, um, fish ladders, and that one that we looked at, it was right at the edge of where the lake basically starts to dump into the river. It was right at the edge there, and then you could see that the, how it kind of goes up like that. And with ours, ours is way back. It's, it's not at their mouth, the where, the, the river and the lake meet, it's not right there.
That's right.
You know, and, and ours is way back, and, and, and I went, "I think that we should, if we were going to do that, what we should have did was put it up at the the beginning, where it doesn't have so much, the water doesn't have so much force, if you will." And, but we were stuck with what we have, and now we've got to try and make do with what we have and fix with what we have. And, and I agree with you that we got to fix the problem now, rather than wait for it to become a bigger problem, more expensive problem, a problem that the, uh, money of the tribe doesn't have.
If we had gotten into a situation where we had said, "We got to wait, and, um, we can't do it right now," and we let that erosion continue, we would have been looking at costs, I'm, I'm, I'm sure, equivalent to what it cost to do the original work, okay? So, like I said, you know, this, this, this construction company, the, their vice president of operations was right there and said, "We will stay here if you tell us, and we will fix this. We'll get some, we'll get some, we'll get some engineering prints, we'll build up those head walls and try to take care of some of that erosion." And it does, and it is functional, but I can tell you that until we fix those meanders and slow that flow, we're, we're going to, all that shoreline around that dam is conifer bog and unconsolidated mud, okay? Now, those, those previous years of flooding left a mark. They went in there and they scoured, okay? They caused voids and pathways and stuff, and that's going to continue until we get volume flow slowed so that it doesn't curl around those edges, erode that shoreline, and work its way around, because that's what water does. So, um, so, we will, we'll go, we're going back to our, to our original plan, which was, you know, meander development. We've got a, I hope it goes through, we've got a big proposal in with, uh, Fish and Wildlife Service under America's Beautiful for that kind of work. Um, the pre-proposal is in. We'll see if we get invited to submit the full proposal. And that's what that is for.
So, so basically, we're, we're not out of the woods yet?
Not as, not as, not as far as, as, uh, incoming flow. I mean, we can't predict what's going to happen, obviously, this coming year. That's the other factor that plays into it. We need to conserve, do we need to conserve water, or do we let it go? If we let it go and we get a dry year, the lake is hurting. If we keep it, uh, we're going to have high water, um, but we're also going to have, you know, a lot of force on those, on those shorelines. So, um, we need to sort of, you know, decide what the best option is, and right now, in my mind, the best option is to make sure that the rice in, in the lake has what it needs. So, we're conserving, but we're also trying to, you know, find the middle ground, keep that water level low enough so that it's not overtopping the, uh, the, the wing walls and working its way around. So...
I think that we, as a council, and, um, DNR, and I should have a meeting on just that, to address that, to listen to, put everything on a table. And, um, huge concern. Thank you.
I got a quick question. When you said meanders, remember that, um, we want to give the history of the meanders. When we had to go and reintroduce, I think it was a plan of four.
Did four.
But we only had, uh, funding for three.
Right.
So, let's not, you know, let's try to learn from that, you know, so we don't, let's ask for more. So...
Yeah, the original, actually...
Can you give the, the small history of, of what we tried to do in the past?
Well, actually, yeah, you're right. I think, if I remember, the original, original plans were like six meanders. So, we looked at, at the historical pictures of what the river looked like, and there was a lot of meanders. So, we thought we could, you know, had funding for six, all right? It ended up being, as you said, three, and they're downstream of the dam, but the upstream is channelized too. And right, and by the way, those meanders worked great for waterfall and, and fish and whatever. I think, uh, Nick and the engineers were out at the dam last week, and they were watching fish go through that dam, so, which is really cool. But we got the upstream to be concerned about now, and, just in terms of incoming water. And so, to me, the next effort needs to be, something needs to be done with that. You know, in eighty-seven, when the, when the old dam was put in, the river was channelized, the idea being that we could get rid of water fast out of the lake, get the water levels down. That much is good. You know, no problem with that. The problem is putting all that water at that dam at one time and not having it, being able to take care of it. Recall that the old dam had gates, you know, weird top, weird top gates and a big concrete wall. So, it hit that wall and couldn't get, you know, over, so it would scour the edges. And, but, you know, that, that was the design at the time, and, you know... but, you know, that, that was the design at the time. And, you know, water has a memory, and it's still doing, still, still acting up as a result of that. So, so.
Kim, and then Darren.
Well, Chris mentioned that he does have a pre-application in for some.
Fish and Wildlife.
Fish and Wildlife. But we are in the process of the DIA end-of-year funds. They can't be used for construction, but we could do, like, the engineering costs and stuff like that. So we could get some of that stuff in there. If you need studies, whatever, I just highly suggest it.
Yeah. We'll put something in for that, you know.
Yeah.
The, you know, a lot of the feasibility work that the engineers did years ago, you know, already had that planned out, but we can, we can go back and revisit that and.
Yeah.
And include the upper reach of the river, too.
Yeah, and just the, even like the, getting the updated cost and paying for like the, the A and E services of it or something, maybe. Because that's what Vince Scott kind of, he talked about a whole corridor thing, though.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah. It was something a little bit different, but it would, you know, we're at, we're working on it currently to have that going in in about two weeks. So just the opportune time.
The proposals for end of the year are due in two weeks? Okay.
Oh, no, yeah. They're due today, actually.
Okay.
On our team's page, and our plan is to have them compiled and rated. So then we go through the ranking process.
Oh, got it.
If the council, you know, maybe this is your number one project after we get through it, you know, ranks and stuff, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Migwich for that. Darren, oops, I'm sorry, Darren.
Chris, how soon, how soon do you think we need to address, start addressing this, 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 this whole issue?
Myself, I'd like, as soon as possible. I mean, we're talking about temporary baffles even on the upstream, on an upstream stretch of that river. So in, in, in the absence of having funding to do a lot of earthwork and actually recreating the river the way it was, actually baffled, you know, putting in some baffles to try to slow some of that flow, so that we can get rid of it without it scouring. So we're, we're actually, you know, looking at, at something like that as a stopgap measure until we can physically put the conditions back where they were.
Okay. Thank you.
Darren, did you have a comment? Can we hear you now? Okay. Okay, I guess we're done. Thanks, Doc.
One comment I'd like to just add is, when you're formulating your plans, just let us know if the council can help you with anything, resolutions, anything to help that funding source.
Appreciate it.
Stay the way it is, you know, so you don't get cut from however meanders to, you know, three meanders. Make sure that, you know, that you come to us and say, "I need a resolution for this," or "I need this," or "I need that" for, to enhance your grant funding and to enhance anything that you're asking for.
We'll do that.
So, because this is extremely important. So make sure you utilize us.
If, if, if the pre-pro, pre-proposal turns into a full proposal, then, then yeah, I'll be visiting with you because we will need the resolutions and, and, you know, associated.
And if there's any funding that you did apply for, and you didn't get, you know, if the whole plan, if, if something has to go amiss because the funding source or whatever, just like we had with those meanders, please let us know, so then we, we can try to find something else. Because we need to stick to the plan that you have, the ideal plan. We can't take any more, maybe let's try this, or let's try that, or, you know, we can't take less. We need to have exactly what you need to do.
Very good.
Migwich.
And, and Chris, I'm sure that maybe even possibly on a federal level with Senator Smith, and also then, next year is a, a budget year for the state. So maybe even just applying for extra funding, because sometimes we can't get all the, all the money in one pot. We get other areas of funding to help build that pot. So we can also help in that manner as well. So.
Thank you.
Migwich, thank you for the update. Oh, sorry, Nikki.
There's just a comment online from Darren. One thing I'd like to point out is, first, the dam had scouring on the edges. The new dam also has scouring on the edges. Will the meanders actually help? Because it seems like both plans didn't take into account the force of the water.
The, will it help? To an, to an extent, yes. That's the, the, the purpose of the meanders is to create frictional force on the water and slow it to the point where the dam can get rid of it. Okay? The dam that's there now has greater capability to get rid of water than the previous dam, because stoplog can be pulled out top to bottom, all the way across. So if we had a severe flooding situation like we had in 2020, 2021, we could open up the whole thing and, and, and move water. There's all, there's, the scouring is just going to always be there at some level. Okay? Those shorelines are mud that was put over there 37 years ago on top of basically spruce and, and, well, spruce and cedar roots. Okay? So once that gets eaten through, it's going to find its way. So we have to be continually vigilant to that possibility, and ready to react to it with whatever means we can. If it's even, I don't know how we could possibly even do additional headwalls. We've got those headwalls going all the way up the sides of the hills. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a condition there that has occurred over a long period of time. We can do our best to mitigate the scouring. There's, there's, until we armor the banks, in other words, and what I mean by that, and I, we don't want to do this, it'd be awful, is to build, basically build a concrete wall around those banks to stop water from infiltrating. It's going to, to some extent, continue. And for all intents and purposes, you know, over time, it will work underneath a concrete wall too, like it did with the dam. So dealing with a, you know, water doesn't quit, water keeps doing what it's going to do. And when you think you've solved it over here, it goes over here and does something else. So it's just a, it's, it's just an ongoing maintenance thing.
Chris, one last question. When will you hear about your pre-application?
So that was turned in, that went in three weeks ago. I, I don't know what the expected due date is. I don't remember, but I, I would think in May.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment for Jeff. Jeff, I know you can't speak or whatever, but if you can hear me. I know I brought this up before regarding contracts, and, and when a tribe enters into a contract, that these contracts are only guaranteed for like a year or two, then the company i- is relieved of their, their duties or responsibilities. I think that we, we need to really emphasize the guaran, the guarantee in the contracts, that it's longer. Thank you.
Just, Darren asked, also asked, will the scouring cause the new dam to fail?
Not the dam itself. It will, it, in time, with the right conditions and continued high-pressure flows against it, it will cause the, the shorelines to continue to erode. So the only way to deal with that is to, well, as I said, a couple of things. You try to mitigate flow, slow it as much as you can with some kind of upstream meanders or baffles, the way it used to be, and/or you armor the, the shoreline so greatly that water can't get through. That's, that in itself is, is massively expensive undertaking. And it will find its way around that eventually, too. It's just the nature of that, that area. It's boggy, soggy, you know, lots of soils with lots of voids and lots of places for water to find its way through.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Okay. Great discussion. Oh, wait.
I'm sorry, can we take another pause to review the.
Okay, we have to take one more pause. So we're trying to get this technology fixed here. So be patient. Thank you. Migwich.
Hey, Jeff, can I have you say something?
Can you hear me?
Oh, my gosh.
We can hear you.
All right, great.
Okay, we just have to wait for the council to get back here and Luke, and we'll get started with our meeting. It's good to have our issues fixed. Okay, we're getting ready to go. They can hear us. We heard Jeff. So we heard Jeff speak, so we know that everything is fixed now. So thanks for bearing with us this morning, goodness gracious. We're resuming here at 10:11 after that small break. Next on the agenda, we have Janil Gogali with two items, contract and sole source request to RT Hawk Housing Alliance LLC for asset management services. And then second is a contract, a service order with DSGW for housing. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, Janil, just hit that, hit that any button, so it turns red. Yep.
Okay. The first thing that I have is a, an agreement for asset management services with RT Hawk Housing Alliance. This is a two-year, a contract where they will be providing consulting services with regard to the asset management needs of the project. And this is for project or tax credit one, tax credit two, and tax credit three units. The fee of $17,500 will be paid through the, excuse me, through the partnerships, one, two, and three.
And this is, you've done this before.
Yes. Yep. Yes.
Any questions on contracts?
Yes, this is, I was just looking at the contract now, and it's a question for Jeff. Jeff, are you on?
I'm here. Yep.
Okay. Now, if you look at, at number three, it talks about arbitration. And the last sentence of that, that, that arbitration paragraph, it says, "The laws of the Bushford Band of Chipwaul shall govern all disputes." Now, is there any, in any way, shape, or form that they can pull away from it and say, "No, we want this resolved in, on the state side"?
No, the dispute resolution provisions here, we, I provided some recommendations to Janil to work with RT Hawk to make some changes. to work with RT Hawk to make some changes before the arbitration provisions were mandatory. And we revised them so that it was an optional dispute resolution for Boise Ford. But you don't have to choose that. And if you did choose it, though, this would, the last sentence would ensure that the Boise Ford, Boise Ford laws would apply to arbitration. But it is entirely voluntary, so the revisions give the band more flexibility for dispute resolutions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, do we have a motion to approve the contract and sole source request in the amount of $17,500 with RT Hawk Housing Alliance for Asset Management Service?
Move.
Moved by Travis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
The next thing that I have is a service order for use with the master agreement between Boise Ford and DSGW. And from the way I understand this, I need to have this service order approved by the tribal council prior to me making any payment of any sort to DSGW. This funding is going to come out of the IHBG ARPA funding. And what, what the architect will provide are the basic services, the project scope, the design development, the construction documents, the permitting and approvals, the bidding assistance, and constructive, construction administration. And to do that for us, the agreement, or the contract is $52,747.41. They have, it took me a long time to get this thing here from the DSGW. And we've had, I don't know, a number of meetings now to talk about what, what the plan is going to be to get some of the homes repaired or rehabbed, rehabilitated. The funding for this project was $712,090, I believe. And I have to have the money completely spent by June 30, 2025. And we have to have the final report submitted by 9:30, 2025. And with the, with the extent of work that needs to be done in the homes that we've kind of, we're focusing on, I think we're going to be lucky if we get two, two units done. The list that they have in this contract of the, of the units are what we, in housing, kind of prioritized. But this list of these houses was here when I got here. Excuse me.
Okay.
I have a few questions.
Go ahead, Tara.
I don't know who these units are, or who's in them, or anything like that. But I just want to make sure, maybe Jeff can reassure us, that it's okay for, for me to vote on this because I don't know who these people are, you know? Who's, I don't recognize. So I want to make sure that there's no conflict of interest that when I am voting on this, if it's my, I can't remember which numbers all my sisters live in.
Right now, these units, I believe, no, they are vacant. There's no one in them.
Cool, okay.
Okay, and I know that you've been waiting for this for quite a while. And I think the, the construction costs have gone way high. And, but it needs to get started. And I see the contract says it'll start in May, which is, today is May. But we really need these homes renovated, and we don't want to lose this funding. So Carol?
Alright, I just wanted to let you know I'm going to be applying with IRRB housing program they have. And I'm just waiting for the cost, and I'll have to get a resolution from you guys. So I'm going to be polling you this week because they want the information by Friday. And I'm going to be applying for funding so that we can cover most of Vermillion and get maybe two or three more units in there.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you, Carol. Questions, anybody?
Yes, under Article 6, it says, it's talking about party representatives. The owner identifies the following representatives in accordance with Section 1.4.1 of the master agreement, and it has Kathy listed as the tribal chairwoman. But anything pertaining to this project, if you could forward me the information as well? You know, anything that comes to Kathy, I'd like to be aware of it, too. Thank you.
And I think it'd be good just to send it to the entire council, just so they're all aware of how the progress is going and stuff, too. It'd be nice to have updates from these projects as well. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve the contract, the service order contract with DSGW Housing in the amount of $52,747.41 for the IHBG ARPA funding project. Moved by Tara. Is there a second?
Second, but I'd just like to point out, you know, where it says it's Article 1, "But Boise Ford Housing seeks to complete a series of renovations to housing units in that lake and tower." I'd just like, you know, I hate being nitpicky, but we are Vermillion. I'd love to use that as much as possible. I know we are part of, considered being part of the city of Tower. But we are Vermillion Reservation. I just want to make sure that's always clarified. Thank you.
With one L. Migwich, Migwich, Robert. I know. When I see papers come through, even with the Boise Ford, it just irritates me. I can understand. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Thank you, Janil. Good job. Next, we have Darrell Newtonan with Resolution Number 77-2024, Delegation of Authority for Purchasing. Good morning, Darrell. Go ahead, Darrell.
Okay, so we were here last month at the last council meeting. And we introduced the resolution to, to have a delegation of authority. There was a lot of discussion. Most of the discussion centered around the very last sentence of Annex A. It was labeled as number five. Jeff and Kim and I got together. Jeff had proposed some new language. And then when Jeff was here last week, we met, and after a lot of discussion, that language really isn't necessary. So we're proposing that we delete that language because it does not change the intent of the delegation of authority. I think that was the only area that needed to be resolved.
Okay. Any questions for Darrell?
Yes, if you look at them, "Be it further resolved that per Section 6 of the bylaws, the RTC retains the right to review any action taken by virtue of the authority delegated herein." Now, you know, you're talking about the reservation tribal council. And does that mean all five? Or does that mean that I can email you asking for any information to this, and it'll be sent to me and CC to the rest of the council? I just want to make that clear, crystal clear.
Jeff, can you provide clarification on that?
Sorry, Shane, can you repeat your question?
That, where it says, "Be it further resolved that per Section 6 of the bylaws, the RTC retains the right to review any action taken by virtue of the authority delegated herein." And my question was that if I, as a council member, request to see information regarding to any projects, that it would be sent to me and CC to the council? Or does it have to be the council itself to request the information?
I think you, as an individual council member, can ask questions regarding, you know, delegated authority, which would include purchasing. What I would say is that any action taken to reverse it or to sort of take actual official action on it would then be a full council decision. But that wouldn't preclude you from requesting information as a council member.
The reason why I ask that, just so that we're crystal clear on this policy or this resolution that we're going to be passing, is that, you know, that's not a hindrance to me, as a council member, from doing my job. Thank you.
Yep, and I think, just real quick to your point, Shane, I think in this context, like, review of action taken would be, you know, could be something also like reviewing, you know, the delegations, or reviewing approval of expenditures under this resolution through reports. I know, like, during the last meeting, there was some discussion, and I think Luke mentioned, you know, maybe there's some reporting of certain types of expenditures that are done on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis. And that would be, you know, considered a part of the RTC's right to review kind of what's going on for, for what it delegates to directors and others.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Darrell on the delegation of authority and the change? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve Resolution Number 77-2024, Delegation of Authority for Purchasing. Do we have a motion? Moved by Robert. Is there a second? Second by Tara. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Good job, Darrell. Migwich, thank you. Okay, next we have Carol Burr and Brian Whitman on the approval of construction bid for Vermillion Public Works Garage Food Shelf Head Start. Good morning.
So I'm here to ask for permission to go with Hawk Construction. We did our bidding process last Thursday. They came in with the lowest bid. We had three bids. And I believe I provided all that information to you guys. We also want to see if we can include the Head Start portion because that's a really good price for that. And with the knowledge that Head Start will be aggressively seeking funding for that.
Yeah, yes.
And if you approve, we can get the contracts going and get the project running.
On its way.
Yep.
Jeff, how does that work when we're including Head Start? Do we know the amount for Head Start?
$157,000.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Where it was predicted to be $550,000. So it's a very good.
Oh, that's a good deal. Okay.
My question right off the bat is regarding this contract now, how long are they going to be held responsible after the project is completed? Is it going to be a year, two years, or is that five years, or?
I'm not sure. I haven't seen their contract yet. So what Hawk will do is they'll submit a contract, we send it to Jeff, and we review it. That's something we can include in there. That's our prerogative. But I think typically it's anywhere from six months to a year.
I've seen two years.
In two years.
Two years on projects.
You know, with the various contracts that, that were, construction project that tribal has undertaken, and the past ones exactly, is that seeing stuff that is happening, and then the tribes basically has to come in and pay for it. And then the company walks away scot-free with all that money, and now we're on the hook to fix it and pour more money into it. And I think that we also need to define between the architect and the construction firm, what they're actually responsible for, so that there could be no dispute that basically messes up the litigation process if there is going to be one. And so they can't be pointing fingers at each other and say, "Oh, you're responsible." No, you are. Then pretty soon we're sitting there, and the problem's still there. You get that, Jeff?
Yep, definitely. And I think we can coordinate with DSGW here and try to push for a significant warranty, and we'll have to negotiate that with, with the vendor.
And then one last thing is that, now, since they're getting this bid at that amount, is there a threshold, is there a certain percentage that they can go over? Or are they capped at that, that amount?
We have a 5% contingency, where it's normally a 10%. So the 5% contingency ends up being, hold on, 200? Can't get my page is open. Did you get it? $238,000.
$238,000.
Yeah. And we are fully funded.
Any other questions?
I see that Head Start will aggressively seek funding for the $157,000 where their bus bay in the building?
Yep.
And that you're also requesting a groundbreaking ceremony?
Yes.
Is that included in that price that you have there? Or will, would that be outside of the groundbreaking ceremony? Because I see council, and HUD, and contractor, DSGW, IRRB, the press, other elected officials, drum group.
I think because of the funding source, we need to be careful. I'm sorry. We need to be real careful because of the funding sources. A lot of times, they don't let you buy food or different things like that.
Kim's going to answer, too.
The cost of the groundbreaking ceremony is not part of the grant project. That would have to be paid for by the RTC out of the general funds.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, and then I just brought it up because I don't know how much you want to know about the funding sources, what we have, what we have set aside, and what we need to, I need to do a little more tweaking, I think. But our funding sources were, we had $700,000 from HUD ICDBG grant. We allocated 1.5 million out of the BIA ARPA funds. And then we had an inflation, with inflation and the
Geo peers.
Geo peers. We were allocating 2.25 million out of ARPA funds. IRRB is going to contribute 386,500 for site prep. And so that funding comes to $4,836,50. So we're close on the funding. After we went through and put, and then we put, Eric had said to put a 5% contingency in our budget. So when we added that, you know, just in case we get in there and there's lead rock or, you know, something that we just don't know of. So with, if we, there was two probable costs, so I can't remember. The one on the left-hand side, we still need $174,276. And that's with the contingency, you know, that isn't committed or any, you know, it's just in case. Trying to see. And that must be without the Head Start in there. And then if we have the Head Start in there, we're short $229,348. You know, and that's with the contingency. The contingency is $293,000. So, you know, we said that the Head Start continued to So, you know, we said that the Head Start continued to pursue their funds. And we thought it was much more reasonable to be asking for the 170,000 than the 550,714 they originally thought it was going to be. Or, excuse me, the Head Start bay was 157.
157.
Yeah, I was thinking 170, yeah.
And the estimate was the 550?
I have a question to the council, thinking about that. You know, the guaranteed for their work is that what happens if we ask for like five to 10 years, but they don't want to do it? Then what? They don't want to guarantee their work for five or 10 years?
I think that would be a negotiation process.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying, if the tribe offers, wants whatever amount, number of years, and they don't want to take that, then what? They come back to us and say, no, they don't want to take that? Then what do we do?
Then that would be up to tribal council to pursue that contract or not. But then you're looking at other contractors who are higher, right? And do we want to put more money into that project? If that, say, one of the other contractors said, hey, we'll do that, right? We're paying more for it. That's how I look at it. And I don't ever, with the construction I've done with housing, I don't recall ever getting them to go five or 10 years. Five, maybe, but not 10 with a warranty. And any construction job, it's just not heard of.
I think, too, Kim, this money has to be, how does this work for ARPA? We have 2026 is our.
The project has to be completed by December 31st, 2026.
Okay.
But it has to be obligated by December 31st, 2024.
Okay, so Kim mentioned in the background there that the money has to be obligated by December 30, 2024, but the project would need to be complete by September 30, 2026, or December 30. Because it's ARPA funding, and we have that timeline stopped.
Yeah.
Any other comments, or?
I have a comment here again about the groundbreaking ceremony. It says, pick a date and time, preferably within the next month, May to June of 2024. It's already May 1st, so does council want to pick a date now? Or, because I'm thinking, if we don't even have the additional funding, or know that it's, you know, totally complete, can we, can we do, can we pick a date after everything's complete, and we know it's a go? Rather than just doing a groundbreaking and then trying to scoop up what we can? And then if we can't get the funding, the additional funding, then you might have to come back to council to get that out of, you know, any Fortune Bay revenues or internal funding. And that's what I don't want to happen, is, you know, let's secure everything. I know a majority of it is, but let's make sure it's final, and then do a groundbreaking ceremony for that. But it's like, coming up so fast, it says preferably within the next month, May to June 2024, and that kind of made me a little urgent, I was like, whoa.
Well, and the urgency, too, is because we need to get this project done as soon as possible, and it's been sitting there for, what, a year and a half now? HUD wants it done by December 31st, 2024. And I don't want to hold it up any more than we have to. So if you guys approve HAWK, we'll get going on the contract. I'll let Eric know immediately, and he'll rush that. And then we'll get it to Jeff, and we'll make sure everything has our ducks in a row, and the warranty issue. And then, once that's approved, then we can try to set a date. Because technically, I think.
But don't let the groundbreaking ceremony, you know, that's not the.
Yeah, no, no.
If we can't do that, not a huge deal. Let's get the project going.
Okay, okay. But we were excited. We thought these bids were going to come in, I did, anyway, like, seven to eight million. And we were so excited that it came in at the four because of construction costs. So looking good for the DNR building.
Shane, you got a question?
Just on a humorous note, if we come up short with funding, we'll have to do fundraisers.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the construction bid for the Vermillion Public Works Garage to HAWK Construction in the amount of $4,339,000?
Move.
Move by Travis, is there a second?
Second, hurry up.
Second by Robert, and you heard that, hurry up. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr. George Strong. Good morning, George. George has two items, a contract with the Association of Minnesota Public Educational Radio Sister, System, Stations, oh my goodness, Amper's. And second is a sole source request for the National Public Radio Annual Invoice. Floor is yours, young man, put the button there. Okay.
There we go. What I got for you, first, the easiest is the NPR invoice. It's in the budget, it's part of our, something that's allocated from CPB. So it's just the same agreement that we've had in place.
And that amount is $11,315, and it's in your budget.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions on the second item, which is a sole source request for National Public Radio Annual Invoice?
I'll move.
Oh, move to approve by Shane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Travis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay.
The second item, I've got to clarify the final draft. What I submitted was an initial agreement, and this agreement wasn't in place in previous years. Right now, they're doing more of an audit, as far as the state's concerned with our, well, all programs, actually. But this is just in place between Amper's, which is our, I don't know what you want to call it. They're assisting us in managing the funding. So they want this in place, just, you know, for both parties' sake. I passed it to Jeff. Jeff suggested some edits, and I passed it back to Joel Glazer, and he, him and Amper's Legal looked it over, and they're fine with the suggestions that Jeff had proposed. So I will get you an updated draft, and that's the one I'll be sending through DocuSign.
Okay. Any questions for George?
A question for Jeff, he's still on. Jeff, did you have a chance to review this contract? And if so, do you have any concerns?
The contract that you have in front of you is the one that George did send on to me, and I did have a few recommended revisions that we try to incorporate into sort of state grant contract templates, which is what this is, because this is use of state funds. So I did recommend the inclusion of a tribal sovereignty provision that confirms the band's immunity, revising the dispute resolution clause to clarify that disputes would not be venue in state court. And then also, sort of a revised Government Data Practices Act provision that clarifies that the band isn't subject to that state law, and that it would follow its own data privacy ordinance with respect to data. So those are things I typically include if they're in state grant agreements. And like George said, it sounds like Amper's didn't have any issue with including them.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Shane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Good job, George.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Jill Schuchardt. Is she online?
Morning.
Oh, good morning, Jill. We have the contract for the Family Spirit Additional Services Agreement with John Hopkins University.
Correct.
Okay, if you want to just give us a briefing on what you're requesting here, young lady?
We have training next week, and they'd like to charge us to attend the training. And so it's an amendment to our contract. And Jeff reviewed it and approved it, and it's the amendment because we hired a new nurse.
Oh, okay. I see that you're, because it's a part of the policy for the, it's a $3,000 additional amount, and then you also said that it's covered in the grant and.
Yeah, the grant funded.
You're just doing a revision to the grant.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Jill? If no questions, I'll, do we have a motion to approve the contract with Family Spirit Additional Services Agreement with John Hopkins University?
Move.
Move by Travis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Good job, Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Lance Hill with Resolution 78-2024, issuance of residential lease to Marissa and Dusty Rose. Good morning, Lance.
All right, let's see here, so Realty, we kind of spelled it out already, but Realty is seeking approval by resolution for residential, the USDA residential lease for Marissa and Dusty Rose. So it'd also be seeking approval of the new agreement as well, lease agreement.
Okay. Any questions for Lance? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve Resolution 78-2024, issuance of residential lease to Marissa and Dusty Rose.
Move.
Move by Travis, second by Tara, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Good job, Lance.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have Vonda Lee Carr, approval to submit extension letter to Head Start for FY 2021 audit. Good morning, Vonda.
So today, I just have a request to submit an extension letter to the Office of Head Start from our federal review, which was held last fall. Boys Fort Fiscal Year 2021 Audit is not complete. And in your packet, you'll see the drafted letter of reasons and moving forward to get it completed from Kim.
Okay, any questions for Vonda?
Yes, no, we're asking for 120 days extension. Are we going to have it done in 120 days, Kim?
And then Vonda, just real quick, in addition to what he's asking, is this the only piece that you're non-compliant in?
Yes.
Is this the only thing we're waiting for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we are still on schedule. I have weekly meetings with the auditors to have it done at the end of May. They keep saying they're on schedule. They're supposed to have their fieldwork review done this week, and they're compiling the draft report. And so we're on schedule to still be complete at the end of May. Office of Head Start says to put 120 days in there, and then at 120 days, if it's not, then we just renew it. That's, they just tell you to do that. Because they do it in four-month increments, they renew it. But no, I want it done before that. And our plan is to have 21 done in May, and 22 is done at the end of December. So we'll have two complete audits during this calendar year.
With that, you know, with them two audits, how is that, is this affecting other grants within the tribal government because of the audits where we're behind?
We just report to them. In, as far as I know, other than one Boys and Girls Club that we had an issue with last year, it hasn't affected any other audits or applying for any that nobody's made me aware of. And talking to the granting agencies, they say about 80% of the tribes are about where we're at.
Jeff has his hand up.
Oh, just a quick clarification. If council approves this, just, I would recommend approving it, subject to a, just a correction on the last, second to last sentence references a 102-day extension. So just to make sure that the days are clear in the letter, that's all.
I was just going to say that, Jeff, good point, because it says 102-day extension. Okay, any other questions on the extension letter? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve submission of the extension letter to Head Start regarding the FY 21 audit. Thank you, Kim, for your information. Move by Shane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vonda, good job. Next we have Warren Vilebrand, Resolution Number 79-2024, adopting revisions to the Boys Fort Taro and appointing Taro Commission members. Good morning, Warren.
Good morning.
The floor is yours, sir.
All right. Basically, what the change in ordinance would be, taking out the word staggered, and then putting it in your hands, whether to stagger them or not, after you approve, hopefully, the five candidates I have. And the wording is in Chapter 7, Second Paragraph.
Any questions for Warren? If no questions, do we have, oh, go ahead, Tara, I'm sorry.
So it's in, it has, it's in the ordinance, you don't have an actual bylaws?
No.
For this, okay. What's the, what's the reasoning for, do you just want like a clean slate of all five members every single time? Or how?
Yeah.
Because, you know, if you don't stagger them, there's going to be all five every single time, and. I don't know, that just seems like, you're going to have to train a lot if you get a whole new.
Yeah, well, I had a hard time getting these five, so.
I just wondered, okay, thanks.
Yeah, no, that's a good question.
Okay, if no other questions, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 79-2024, adopting the revisions to the Boys Fort Taro and appointing our Taro Commission members and alternates? Move by Robert.
Second.
Second by Tara, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Good job, Warren.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have William King. Willie.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, Willie.
So what I'm asking for today, this morning, is approval of one of three quotes to have the AC units repaired at New Moon or replaced at New Moon. You should have the three quotes.
Yeah, we're looking, hang on.
Yep.
Is that the one for 28,800?
No, so the one we want to go with is OJ's HVAC, which is 20,800. And then on top of that, I've been working with a fellow through Lake Country Power, Mr. Dan Cooper, and we got approved for a $10,000 rebate after the project is finished.
Okay. Go ahead Tara, I see you're going to.
You see I'm going to ask a question?
Yeah, I can see she's going to ask a question, so go ahead, I'm going to turn my button on.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions here and maybe this goes for almost all agenda requests. When did, when did our tribal attorney review this? And then I want to make sure that everybody fills these out completely and that there's an authorization for Kathy to sign, you know, if it's in there, I don't, maybe I'm not, I I just want to make sure that whenever submitting contracts like this, that the tribal attorney is always consulted and then that there's always a clause in there that Kathy can sign herself, so.
All right, so I haven't received a contract from them yet, just the estimate. The only thing I have now is, right now is a service contract that I've started.
Okay, so the service contract would need to be sent to Jeff, but we can approve the vendor today and then bring the contract, service contract back.
All right.
Is that okay council, so we can get this moving, winter, winter, summer's coming, you don't want, we don't know what the temperature is going to be like and AC is needed if you need it.
True sound sir, which one of you guys, do you okay with the one out there recommended? No?
Okay, I move to approve Willie's preference of OJ's HVAC out of Ely, Minnesota.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried, good job.
Thank you.
Thanks Willie. Okay, next we have Kim Greiner with like 10 items, no, five. Good morning again Kim.
Good morning. Forgot a pen, oh wow. No. Only if I need to write something. So the first thing I wanted to talk about was the garnishment of per capita's and the timeline we had. For some unforeseen circumstances, you know, we're, we're behind. And so I proposed some new dates, moving the dates of the letter, the dates of the letters that had to be mailed out. But everything, the times for the band members to negotiate or dispute still get the same, you know, they're adjusted by the same two weeks. And we trim the time off on, from the time the program directors give us the information who are we going to do it. And then, so I can go through it, so the original date was, the notice of the letters was supposed to be out 4/26/24. That was last Friday. The new date is 5/10. We're well on our way, we've had people working on the back information, we can make that date. The, then in the original policy, the date was 5/31 for the customers to, to contact the departments. It would now be 6/14. So they got the two weeks. Deadline for final payback agreements or disputes, so if there's a known dispute or an error, you know, the, when they go, talk to the department and the department notify, you know, the department is going to be the final one who says we're going to garnish or not. So if there is a, a dispute or something and we don't handle it, we're not, you know, if we don't, because I, you know, I don't know what's going to happen between now and that, you know, for unforeseen circumstances. So like if there's an unresolved dispute, I would suggest we move to put them in, you know, not garnish theirs, you know, to get, yeah, to work on it. So then, the original date for the programs to have us, their list of final payback agreements or garnishments to accounting was 7/13. We moved that to 7/20, so it's an internal, it's not the, you know, an individual customer that's getting shorted. It's, we'll just do it, and as, if they come in and work on it in between, it's all going to be in teams, we'll be having kind of almost a real time list. A couple of things that I put for other information on here. You know, we do not find out the amount of the per capita till almost the end of July anyways. So we're still within our timeline, so I'm guessing the estimated date that we'll find an amount of what it's going to be is probably, I put on there July 27. As always, we've always had our address update, you know, I wanted to put this plug in there. Address update deadline is always July 31, we keep that consistent, so people remember to get their addresses in, you know. And then I wanted to set the per capita date, which I had a typo on here, so I had in my update list, it was 8/10, it should be 8/9. When I looked at the calendar, I looked at the Saturday instead of the Friday.
Kidding.
Well, I gotta, I gotta make sure I got the dates right.
Okay.
Yeah, and so I'm, I'm anticipating a lot of like payback agreements coming out this year type stuff, because we're wiping out, we're not going back to the old ones or starting anew, so there'll probably be a lot of payback agreements this year and then if they default, you know, on that payback agreement, then next year they don't have the opportunity to negotiate payback agreements.
Questions for Kim?
Yes, I think that one thing that we need to do is we need to get that information out to the band members as soon as possible, get it out on social media, the website. And my question for you is, I had a band member who, he's a band member in another tribe, but he can be enrolled here as, here. And if he was to be enrolled here at Boys Fort, when would he need to be enrolled by in order to get the per capita?
You have to be enrolled before March 31.
Before March 31, okay.
That's in our per capita, we actually have a per capita policy.
Okay. And then just to reiterate that this is the second year that we're going to be getting our increase from the state, it's not permanent yet. And it's not in the legisla, this year's legislature, but it's going to be next year, 2025, and that's when we as a council need to work with our lobbyist, Reg LaBeau, to work on it to make it permanent. I just want to point that out, thank you.
Two things that are going on with per capita currently right now is, we discussed getting the address notification letters out and I've been working with HR and enrollment on that. Probably be going out sometime, late this week, early next week. And the second thing is, is once we update the letters, or the policy with these dates in there, we're going to send out the whole, the resolution and that 2024 policy out to all band members. That'll probably happen beginning of next week, before we even mail the individual collection letters. So everyone's notified, but it's not everyone is garnished, you know.
Yeah. I'm going to ask anyway.
Yeah.
So, your list that you had before, you're probably constantly revising it. So that council isn't, how do we, because we're going to get the calls.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to get the calls, so what is the process that you want us to go through in order to, you know, help you, help our band members, you know, how can we bridge that gap to make sure things are flowing really well?
Yeah. Prior to, the last time we did per capita was, garnishments was before COVID, so in 2019. I, off the top of my head, I only remember like four or five times the council actually came down and asked a question about, like, someone who had a question about theirs. So most of the, I think you guys get calls, so one is to know which program is, you know, they owe to and to give them the proper, the proper department to go to. So if it was a housing rents, you know, they go to Janil or their, her designee, yeah. And we talked about, we did have a meeting the other day with some of the program directors and stuff, we'll be changing this up more, you know, after this year, to have it more streamlined. And then we'll have a teams page that, you know, you would be able to look, just to look to see, you'd probably have the person and what they're being, you know, what they got the letter for, kind of a summary thing, so you guys know. But the biggest key is to send them back to the programs, you know, to do that. We're going to have a teams page for each department, we'll have their own teams page where we track the calls from the people and the status of their stuff, just like we do the per capita calls for their checks, so that if, I'm just, because I see Janil sitting right there, not to pick on her, but like Janil's the designated person and then she has an alternate that could field these calls, if they're, if Janil's out, the other person that answers it can look and say, well, Janil said you needed, you, sent you a payback agreement or you discussed a payback agreement, but we haven't received it yet. You know, so they can pick up a conversation without that. I seen Darren put on the chat, is the teams a appropriate place to have a financial discussion? The teams is locked and so there's only that department and accounting people who are working on this that have access to that channel for that department, so for housing, it's just who Janil, Janil designates and our staff that are working on this project, so it's not like wide open, yeah, it's a private team, it's a private team and the channels are locked, so even the whole team can't see the whole, Janil can't see water and sand or courts or anything, yeah. No, it's, there's security there.
Any, any other comments regarding the amendment dates for per capita garnishment? And you want us to set the per capita date today?
That would be nice.
Okay. Any other comments, go ahead Shane.
Just one more thought is that I know that we talked about this before and that was direct deposit. Hopefully next year, per capita, we can look at setting up direct deposits, because I know band member's been asking about it.
Yeah. The problem, you know, one is we've been so far behind because of COVID and staffing stuff. But now, after we've done some training with cybersecurity, we don't have a system that does direct deposit for the vendor check, you know, like the per capita checks. We could make something, but the new, the new fraud is posing as someone, and I've shown Luke this, I've gotten like three emails from someone posing as Luke trying to change his direct deposit. Yeah, you have to have a way of verifying that you're really talking to that person. You know, our new system, which I was hoping to have on the agenda for today, I just didn't get it written up, will have those options for that and then we'll have to figure out how we're going to verify who we're really talking to. Because our internal process we've implemented in accounting for like payroll, if you send an email or whatever, Mary has to call that person in person to really see if they're asking to change their direct deposit. Yeah. We're really trying to protect people, because ours, you know, we went to this training part of our tribal PINE Nets project and that one place, it was like three or $400,000, people were changing their ACHs on vendors, posing as the vendor and changing it and stealing it. So it's, you know, there's, there's always someone out there trying to take a shortcut.
They're very creative too.
There's, there's just a handful, but they're, that's where you gotta, you gotta keep a watch on them.
They're very creative. Any other comments for Kim on the, we'll amend the per capita garnishment first and then we'll set the date second.
Okay.
Are you guys okay with that? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the amended dates for per capita garnishment as presented by Kim? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, you have to, you have to come up to the, not to deter questions, but you do have to come up to the mic.
While we're waiting, while we're waiting for Janil to come up, this money does not come back to the tribal government general fund. It goes back into those programs, so if it's a fine, it goes back to the courts, if it's rent, it goes back into housing, you know, it goes back to their programs, it doesn't come to us.
Go ahead Janil.
Just a question that I had is, I've had a couple band members contact housing and they've told us that they've had their per capita checks withheld in previous years and so they were disagreeing on the balance that's on their statement. And I want to know how or what's in place before we start this process that I'm going to be able to get that information so that I can see what, because if you owed housing, daycare, water and sanitation, it's prorated. And so I don't know what amount housing got and I don't know if the band members are understanding that or if they're just thinking that their check was withheld and it all come to housing. So I, I need to be able to have access to that information or, not the whole thing, I just need to know what came to housing. I don't need to know what went to water or wherever.
You will have that and the band member will have that too, because we write the letter, but then we also give them a complete transaction history for housing, you know, our statements are all, have all of them on there, but we can run what's called customer history into, so they'll see, and it'll be by date, so they'll see like their rent charge if they had a, you know, like a credit or a write-off or, then they'll see their payments.
Okay.
And you'll be able to see, it doesn't say, it'll just say payment and you can tell by August usually and, and, you know, I can give you the dates that we did per capita's in the past years for future reference.
Okay.
But each individual person that's receiving a letter has that history behind there, so you can look up, so even if they thought they missed a payment, maybe we missed a payment in December, crediting it to them. They'll be able to see that payment and if they have received, you know, that's part of the dispute process. So they'll have an entire history to look at.
Okay, and then the other.
Out to 2011, excuse me.
The other comment or question that I have is, it has to do with the statements that we receive on a monthly basis and if there is a tenant that is disagreeing with the amount that's on that statement, then it's up to me to figure out for sure what is correct and what isn't.
Well, it depends, so like, did we, you know, did, let's say someone's income changed. So like, let's say they were working and then they're not working and so they should have, did they, you know, there's a lot of questions that go into this, like, did they recertify? You know, and then if they recertified, did we get, did we receive an email or if we received the email, did we? Or if we received the email, did we make the change? So the best place to start is to go back and look at their, you know, like, like that.
Okay.
Um, we'll have some more internal trainings on that, um, to help them out. We had a brief meeting on Monday to get people prepared and ready because I didn't know. And we're trying to keep all these things moving.
Okay, that will be good. I just want to make sure I have.
You're going to get.
Answers.
You're going to get a pile of information.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, most of it will be in team, because they'll, actually, we're going to put the copy of the letters and the, the, the transaction history. You'll, in your channel, you'll have that. So you can go look at each individual one.
Carol?
Hi, I just had some questions about New Moon. Uh, I know their.
Yep.
Statements are wrong and.
Yeah, we have.
Paperwork and the information has been sent to accounting and it hasn't been corrected for like months. And so.
We're going to have, I sent you an email, you had emailed me and we were going to have a meeting on Friday.
Okay. And we'll get that out, because I don't want those statements to go out.
No, and so in the, in the case of that, I think what it is, is about their subsidies. So like, um, when we transitioned from DW Jones to Boysport doing it. We, um, and then I know, um, we had our staffing changes. So I don't think the subsidy portion is, we need to look at that. But in that case, that's one like if we don't get the dispute or, you know, we won't figure it out, we won't.
Send it.
Send it. Yeah.
Okay.
Because there's some old ones, some old balances of people who weren't in that category.
Right.
That were former tenants at New Moon, you know.
Yeah, but yeah, our current ones are the ones that there's some.
Yeah. And so we just need to, you know, we're finally getting to a point of catching up and cleaning up and stuff after COVID.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the amended dates for per capita garnishment as presented by Kim? Moved by Robert. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, silent, motion carried. Next, do we have a motion to approve the per capita date for eight, nine, 2024?
Move.
Moved by Travis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. There you go, Kim. That one.
Okay. My next request is a sole source request for FI Salter for appraisals for five more buildings for the 105L lease process. We currently have nine approved leases now, which approximately equals over 1.4, 1.5 million already per year. We're adding, um, we, now that the, we need to do the OEO shelter. We're going to do the sawmill garage where, um, environmental stores some stuff. And there's like, there's about, there's about a four to five month time period. And so we do have pleshia chiropractic slated on here. It might not be ready to be appraised, but it's on here. We're doing the Kwanzaa hut, um, because we didn't include that our first time around. And, um, we were very successful on the New Moon apartment building part. Because we thought it was just going to be the offices, but they gave us the whole apartment building. So now we're adding in the duplexes. So, um, that'll be a big help for, um, maintaining that property. So we had, we have nine current leases approved with IHS. There was several that they did not approve for their internal rule, made up rules, which we have to circle around at a later date to discuss. We have 11 that, um, the BIA is currently working on. They did hire someone. They did contact us. We did some certifications. And then we added, we sent in two more buildings for BIA. After some clarification. And so, um, it's really been, um, starting to fall in place.
Good. Um, any question on the request to have FI Salter appraisals come in and do the, um, 105L lease eligible buildings? If not, a call for a motion to approve the sole source request?
Move.
Moved by Travis. Is there a second? Did you second Tara? Seconded by Tara. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay, Kim, moving right along.
Okay. Um, my next one is a sole source for, it's to check writing systems. This is for, um, bond insurance and maintenance on our signatures on checks. You know, we have some machines that do it, but it also provides us extra coverage in case of fraud. And it does cover ACH and remote deposit, um, stuff. Because like usually around per capita time after we send out per capita, we get one or two people sitting up like AT&T, auto pays, trying, you know, because when you get a check, you can see, you know, you got the banking information. We've had some more fraud, um, the last couple of weeks on accounts that have been closed since 2014. The bank has just been sharing the information, you know, so someone stole someone's mail.
Yep.
You know, prior to 2014, and then they make their own checks and try to pass it through. So it's always, always a thing. Um, and then, um, this is the time of year this is normally due. He comes up and he maintains our signature machines and, and that he did call. We told him not to come till after the election time because if there's a change in signatures, we might as well do it all at once, you know, when he maintains the machines.
Okay. Uh, any questions for Kim on the sole source request for check writing systems in the amount of 23,960?
Where's the money coming from?
It comes out of indirect cost.
Indirect cost.
Yep. And that's, um, and that covers up to $250,000 on a forgery.
Okay.
Because we, you know, people alter checks, they wash checks, they.
Very creative.
Yep.
Move to approve.
Move to approve the sole source by Shane. Is there a second? Second by Tara. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay.
Okay. Um, the next one is sole source for approval for, um, Tribal First Insurance. This is, we're renewing because we had to switch last year because of the, the smoke shop at Fortune Bay. Travelers dropped us. Um, so they're renewing and they renew in parts. So this is general liability, automobile, tribals, officials, errors and omissions, and miscellaneous errors and omission, employment practice liability, sexual misconduct liability, fiduciary liability, and crime coverages. And it expires on 5/15/2024. The original quote came in at 158085 for this year. At last year, it was 149522. I had to submit this because I was going to be off the day the, um, agenda deadline was due. So Jeff hadn't finished reviewing it. He has reviewed it. We had a conversation with Boyd and, um, it's recommended that we, um, up the tribal officials errors and emissions liability coverage to, um, 2 million per occurrence and 4 million aggregate, which would put, it puts, it goes up about, I believe it was about 1,380, I can't, um, but then the new, the new premium for all the, everything would be 1,000, or excuse me, 159,422. And our property insurance will renew in June. And just a, a, a heads up is, um, property insurance has skyrocketed. So, um, that's where we're going to see the sticker shock. But it's everywhere. It's not, yeah.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Yes. Um, so when we were getting ready to build or do the, uh, the smoke shop up there, Range Reliable dropped us like a hot potato.
Not Range Reliable. Range Reliable is our agent. Travelers, that, travelers.
Who we worked with, Range Reliable.
Range Reliable is just an agent. Yeah.
But works through them, correct?
He's an independent agent. He represents any kind, you know, he represents numerous companies. Yeah, but he does, he does, yeah, he, that's, yes.
So, so now Boyd is ba, so basically is working with Tribal First then?
Yep. Tribal First, um, took Boyd on as an agent to, um, help us with our insurance.
Any other questions?
Oh, go ahead, Darren. I have a question. For the Tribal First, general liability, automobile, um, I'm not sure about if it's, no. That's the, that's one of the main reasons a lot of, um, a lot of times we can't approve. Because somebody has, you know, three violations. It's even, I've, I've heard of, um, two speeding tickets in, in one session, you know? And then one, one other minor traffic thing. Boom, 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 three, you know? You're not allowed to even interview. Or, um, you know, somebody's record, they're not insurable within the three years that we have. And this was with the other agency also that we had. Okay, Tribal First, this is a different agency than we had before, a different firm. Is there any flexibility that Boysport can, can do to help, um, getting our people insured or getting them? Is there any kind of even waivers, you know, let's say that we, we apply, we, they apply and they have to sign a waiver that, um, within whatever, how many years? Or you cannot have any violations between, you know, some kind of.
Yeah.
Something on agreement so that our insurance will carry them and they're able to even, or even just to interview, my goodness, we can't even interview those folks sometimes. So we need some flexibility in our, um, insurance. Is that possible?
Um, well, I'll speak to that in a couple of parts here. Um, yes, I understand it's a barrier to employment. We came up with the three-year policy when we were with travelers. When we moved to, um, moved to, um, Tribal First, they wanted us to make it more strict. They wanted it even, they didn't even, they thought that was too flexible. Boyd did work with them and convinced them to stay where we were. But we can revisit and see if they're willing to move on that. The second part that plays into this is in the compact with the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Right in our annual funding agreement, it says you have to meet or exceed federal driving requirements. So there's a couple, you know, some places it's in the funding and some places it's the insurance agency. But we can circle, certainly I can get hold of Boyd. We'll circle back and see if we can come up and see what we can do.
So regarding the funding, the federal requirements, have we been meeting that?
That's why we came up with that one policy. Um, it's, I would say fed, federal is probably far more strict. And we've, we've, we've had discussions with Jeff on it before and we were trying to, we reached out to the other, we, we tried to reach out to like, um, IHS and HUD. And then like transit itself, transit because they're.
That's federal.
DOT, you know, they have a whole nother set of requirements. So we were trying to get a policy together, but, um, the BIA is the one that has the published policy. And it is in our funding agreement. And HUD never responded and IHS never responded.
How does that work with self-governance? Because we are self-governance under BIA. Is that something that can be amended in the AFA or the compact?
It's, I can ask, but it's in the actual AFA, it says that and that's a required thing to be in there.
But not everybody's funded under the BIA.
No, I know. That's where the.
That's where it comes in.
Yeah. And I think why they put that in there, and maybe Jeff can help me on this, is because like if you're performing a job for BIA or IHS, you're covered by the Federal Tort Claim Act.
Right.
And so the federal government is really covering us for those, those things.
I, I think it would be great to have a meeting. So, so, um, I, I would hope with the directors and, because I was thinking even about Vonda's program, because she runs into a lot of individuals that have driver license issues. And, you know, if we can all get on the same page as to how to figure this out with Jeff and collectively. Because I think that, that is a hindrance with the, with the driver's license. And, and, you know, I know, uh, transit is, is more into the, uh, federal, um, they're, they're really strict. You know, so I think if we all know what those differences are and maybe work to see what kind of solutions we can come up with, that would be, that would be very helpful.
And, um, to Tara's question, um, and Shane's about like the federal policy. You remember how Dave Larson used to do it for his wildland firefighters? That's the federal policy. And he was really, really super stickler on it.
Well, maybe we can set up a meeting on that to get that, to get that on the table and maybe put, put everybody's heads together to try to think of something.
Yes. Um, because it is, it's our insurance that we carry that makes these, you know, the policies that makes the rules that, um, we carry those folks, the employees under there. There, the misnomer is that it's, um, any one director.
No.
No, you know, that says no. Any, that it's HR that says no, you know? It's our insurance carrier that says what goes.
And we had worked with the insurance company and the tribal council years ago that had, um, things that listed, you know, what makes you insurable or not insurable.
Right.
And it was a general thing.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, that it's, that it's Tribal First. That's our insurance carrier that makes these, um, rules and that we need to stand by. We're trying to be as lenient and work with them as we can. But that's our insurance and we can't be dropped for any violations. And it's not any director and it's not HR that's, that's doing it.
Good. Okay. Any other comments on the, um, sole source request and approval of agreement to Tribal First? Not a call for a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Moved by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shane. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay, Kim?
Hi. The last thing.
Hi.
I'm still here and I got more later. The last thing is, is, um, the Conservation Committee funds. And, um, the Conservation Committee funds has recommended that they allow DNR to use those funds. However, they see fit to meet their purposes. And the only reason why I'm putting it on here is so it's recorded in the minutes. So if someone asks, it's there. A little bit of history was, um, the Conservation Committee had, um, they used to have like their own checkbook a long time ago and they would char, they, they gets the permit charges, you know? And then they would buy like rice bags, they would permit, they'd buy the permits. They would buy like the, um, Porta Johns. And then, um, then the council, um, pulled back all the independent checkbooks. Because they had, they were using our taxpayer ID number. They were paying like stipend, you know, there, there was just the, you know.
What year was that?
That was.
What you're talking about is before I was.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It was in the nineties. Yeah. You know, because the Conservation Committee has been under the tribal, so the council pulled all committees. It's not just. It's not just like, like saying the Conservation Committee, it was all committees were pulled back. They, they still have their independent funds maintained for their purposes they were intended to, but it had to flow through that. So if the council had questions, they could see it if there was, so like with stipends, if you're paying stipends, you know, stipends are taxable, you know, just stuff like that. So we had always maintained and it's program number 114 on our system, the Conservation Committee discussed and sent an email, they would like to just let DNR to have it. And so the only purpose is here is to record it in the minute, so later on if someone comes back and asks a question, it's documented.
Well, when Kim first presented this to the council and I asked if there was a policy in place regarding the situation, she said no, but recommended that we do take some type of official action, so I said yes, but I think that there should be a policy put in place so that this is addressed further down the road. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, a call for a motion to approve the Conservation Committee funds to be used for DNR purposes? Moved by Travis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Way to get through that, Kim.
Okay, we, I just have some.
Oh, I'm sorry.
After, after things here. So the things that were under 114, which you just listed a bunch of, a bunch of items.
Yep.
Those are still tasked with natural resources.
Correct.
To purchase.
Yep.
We aren't giving any extra funds to cover, you know, 114 is going into natural resources and there's still tasks to get all of these items that were previously paid for under 114.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Next we have Luke.
I just have a resolution for supporting the Center of American Indian and Minority Health application to the Indian Health Service for the Med Grant to support the success and recruitment of the Midge Area Native American students into health professions. This is a grant by the University of Minnesota, but it helps target Native American students in Wisconsin, Michigan and Minnesota and kind of promote them to go into the health profession. It's a, you know, college is tough and, but this grant would help them kind of pursue anything in the health profession.
And, and this is a great program because I remember it used to be under NDSU in the 80s, the InMed program. Because I, when I was homeschool coordinator at Netlake School here, I was trying to recruit two students out of ORE. One of them is actually in medicine now that was I was trying to recruit, but she didn't go into it at that time, but she did, she is now a provider. But this is a great program for kids to get into the healthcare industry and University of Minnesota's got a great school there, so I'm glad they took on the InMed program as well. Is there any other discussion on this? If not, a call for a motion to approve Resolution 80-2024, supporting the University of Minnesota InMed Grant Application.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Travis, seconded by Shane, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Thank you, Robert. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Robert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shane, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed, silent, motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for attending today. We apologize for the technical difficulties, but hopefully we'll be good next time. Oh, we are adjourned at 11:38. Thank you, Regina, for reminding me. Have a good day, everybody. Giga Waberman.